I also mean the order, would you all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. So Lucinda de novo, Councilor de novo and Councilor Stevens will not be attending this evening. Carmen Matthews, Councilor Matthews is virtual, so.
Looks like Sarah is too.
Oh, Sarah is? I'm sorry, Sarah. And Sarah is virtual, so Lucinda is the only one that will not be attending this evening. First item on the agenda is public comments. This is the time to come forth, make a public comment. That's not on the agenda. I have a list and it says Holly Boardman will be addressing us.
Hello, everyone. My name is Holly Boardman. I'm the executive director of the Cus Bay Downtown Association, and I just wanted to come here tonight and share some of our fun fourth quarter festivities with you to kind of keep you in the loop on what we have going. So on November 12th and 13th, we had our holiday open houses, which is people go around to the stores. They're on a map and they can enter to win door prizes. And it's just a way to kick off the holiday season and get people into businesses and looking around. So from November 12th until November 27th, if you save your receipts from downtown stores, Front Street District and Cus Bay Village, for every $100 in receipts that you have, you can get a free commemorative mug. They're really nice on Shop Small Saturday at Jenny Shoes between 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. So that's how we celebrate Shop Small Saturday. And then we're doing things a little bit differently this year for Santa. The Egyptian Theater, as you know, is still closed right now and people can't sit on Santa's lap with COVID-19. So we have pivoted and this year we are going to do a walk by Santa. We're going to have it at the visitor center. We'll have a trailer and it'll be decorated with all of Santa's reindeer and trees and ornaments. It looks really nice. And then people can walk up to the base of the trailer. We have a mailbox for Santa's special letters. They can tell Santa their wish list and we give them a candy cane and then they can take pictures. Santa's up top in his chair and they're right here and they take photos. So that's really fun. That's going to be between 1:00 and 5:00 p.m. on Saturday, November 27th. And then we have our mayor, Joe Benetti, who is going to help us with the tree lighting at 5:30. So that should be really nice. And then we have kind of a new event. We did it last year and it worked out really well. It's called the Reindeer Roundup. So all the reindeer that Santa has on his trailer during the Santa and the tree lighting, there's one, they all have their scarves around their neck with their names embroidered on them. Well, we have a downtown reindeer and his name is Ruckus. Ruckus convinces all of Santa's reindeer not to go back to the North Pole, but to instead explore downtown Cus Bay. So the reindeer rotate from November 29th through December 31st, December 21st, to all the different businesses in downtown Cus Bay. They might be there for three days. They might be there for a week. So if you find the reindeer, you can take a photo, put it up on Facebook. You don't have to, but if you want to, that's great. And then you get entered into the grand prize drawing. And there's really great prizes that all of our businesses have donated. So it's a nice way to get people into stores that maybe they wouldn't frequent otherwise. So that's all the fun stuff I had for you. If you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions for Holly? No, things look looking up and good and it looks like there's a lot of activity. So thank you for all the hard work and also the board that I know is very involved. So thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Any other public comments? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to the consent calendar. Counsel, how would you like to proceed?
I move we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar that's submitted. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Okay, next item on the agenda this evening is approval of a request to initiate the vacation of a portion of Grant Avenue right away. Jim, you're going to be handling this.
I will, thank you. Good evening.
I look over there and I see you tonight. Looks good to have you there.
Good to be here.
Jennifer did good for you, but anyway.
The owner of the property at the northwest corner of Grant Avenue and Marple Street has requested the vacation of a 60 by 100-foot area of Grant Avenue west of Marple Street. A map of the location is included in the attached application packet. The requested area of vacation will allow the owner, who is developing a subdivision, to install stormwater structures to handle stormwater runoff from the project. Staff and utility providers have no objection to this vacation request. And should the city council initiate this vacation, a public hearing on the matter will be held on December 7th, 2021. Action requested is if it does please the council, initiate the requested vacation and authorize city staff to proceed with the vacation versus Cus Bay Municipal Code.
All right, any questions for Jim on this? Sarah, Carmen, any questions? Okay, hearing none. How would you like to proceed?
I'll move that we initiate the requested vacation and authorize city staff to proceed with the vacation request per Cus Bay Municipal Code, Chapter 1245, Public Right-Away Vacation.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the request to initiate the vacation of a portion of Grant Avenue right away. Okay, are there hearing no questions or comments? I'll call for the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Next item on the agenda is consideration to adopt a supplemental budget. Before I open the public hearing, Nicole, can you just give us a brief summary of what it's about, please?
Sure. As we've had in the past about this time of year, once we kind of get an idea where we stand with the prior fiscal year and audit, we try to right-size our funds, carryover balances to actual from what we had originally budgeted. So the majority of what you're seeing tonight is just that kind of right sizing. There's a couple of other elements that you're going to see in here. On the consent calendar, we had those DLCD grants. Those have been included in this. And as well as the ARPA funding that we received in August, putting some appropriations to those funds that we've received.
Okay, counsel, before I open the public hearing, any questions for Nicole? Okay, hearing done. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the consideration to adopt the supplement budget, excuse me. Approval would require adoption of the resolution. So anyone would like to come up and make a comment? Nicole gave a brief summary of it, but if you have any questions, she'll be glad to answer them for you. Anyone? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? In adopting Resolution 21-30.
I move that we adopt Resolution 21-30, authorizing a supplemental budget appropriating additional funds for fiscal year 2021 and 2022.
Second.
Second.
There's been a motion and second to adopt Resolution 21-30, supplemental budget. Is there any other comments or questions by any of the counselors? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. And that brings us to the city manager's report. Roger.
So I have just one issue for us tonight, and it has to do with the yet-to-be-developed parking lot at Third and Central. The design plans are nearly complete, although we have halted that while we waited for word on a grant for a car charger that was written and submitted by Carolyn Johnson. It was designed to be a fast car or a fast charger for electric cars. We learned this week that we did not get that. So as we look at that, the funding for this parking lot is through DEQ, sponsorship option funds and the limited use of those funds for stormwater runoff treatment. We were able to use those funds for this parking lot because it's what's called a green parking lot and it'll percolate those runoffs right into the ground and thus treat them. None of those waters will actually leave the site. A fast charger is not eligible. In looking at budget dollars, the fast chargers are extremely expensive. They're about $100,000. And while that is expensive, the infrastructure needed to actually operate them is even worse. Pacific Power does not have the infrastructure in the ground currently that would support that. And it's estimated that it could cost us an additional $150,000, making that fast car charger $250,000. I'm not sure that amount of money is warranted for that and that would have to come from another source like Urban Renewal. Now, we could look at a standard or a slower charger. Those are plus or minus $30,000 plus an additional probably 60 days to get Pacific Power to review the plans. Staff is suggesting that instead of moving forward with a car charger at that location is that we focus on trying to get a car charger at the Front Street lot and move forward with this project so that we can get this one done and bid out in a timely manner.
So for Sarah.
I wanted to bring it to your attention.
Thank you, Roger. Sarah and Carmen, I don't know if you know, but this was sent to us as an email. It's from Jennifer, but Roger forwarded it to us with these details that he just went over. It might help you follow along. So counsel, how do you feel about the comments that Roger made in putting a charging station or fast charger at that's location?
I think it's disappointing, but economically it's pretty disappointing. Maybe Carmen might be able to shed some light. What's the difference between a fast charger and a slow charger? I mean, are we taking, even if we went with a slower charger, are we taking up a valuable parking space for a considerable amount of time?
I think that even the slower chargers that are adding like 25 miles of range per hour of charge are still a worthwhile investment. You know, it's disappointing that we didn't get the fast charge one, but I think that, you know, moving forward with changing the focus for that potential location to be on Front Street makes total sense to move this project forward. You know, if the slower charging one is still an option, a viable option for us to do in this location, I would be supportive of that, of that direction.
So Sarah, you have any comments?
Yeah, I agree with Carmen. I did just a quick search and Biden's new infrastructure bill does include funding to support additional chargers across the country. So I think it seems like there's some additional funding coming down the road as well.
You know, I think that Front Street would be the best place for a fast charger. In fact, I truthfully believe that the Cus City Museum and Cus Bay Village area is probably the best. I've talked to Marsha Hart about trying to apply for a grant. I think that's something that's still available to her. Maybe we can find a way to partner and get that done there. Because as far as I'm concerned, I know Carmen, I think it'd be a draw and I think that's a perfect spot that would entice these type of cars, electric EV, charging stations to be an attraction to electric cars. And so maybe we just need to revisit with Marsha and see if we can do a partnership with it. Maybe put a few Urban Renewal dollars if we need to help move that forward. But I think that'd be the spot to do. Something like, I mean, Bannon has them where there's like six of them. I don't know how they went about it or how they accomplished it, but yeah.
Might be worth reaching out to them. I just hate to delay this project any longer. I mean, we were talking about getting this done before the festival season last year and here we are pushing this forward. Is this something for that parking lot or maybe one of the other parking lots to the west of the Hall Building? I'm dating myself. I don't know what building that is anymore that we could maybe look at in the future?
Well, we possibly could look at two of the other projects, parking lot projects that we have, or upgrading the parking lots in between Curtis off Fourth. There's two lots, or there's actually three lots over there, but two of them are on the goal list to update. And I think we have set aside at least future SO dollars to undertake those projects, depending on how much we have left. But that could be, it could be included in one of those parking lots. But the Front Street parking lot, if we can get additional one, those actually have more use.
Yeah, I think for me, you know, while it's disappointing that this particular location didn't suit the opportunity, the funding opportunity, there will be other opportunities to focus on this. And I think maybe looking in areas where the infrastructure potentially already exists could make sense or where we're bringing new infrastructure, like you said, Joe, in the Cus Bay Village, Front Street area, that makes more sense to me too. So I'm glad that we're, you know, looking at it, but I still would like to push for at least, you know, a moderate charging station at that location, if that's still an option to keep this project rolling. But in agreement with Counselor Kilmer, I'd like to see this project move forward so we can get that, this all buttoned up.
So I guess, Drew and Rob?
Not real familiar with how this aspect of the infrastructure would work. If we do develop out that parking lot, can it be done in a way where it can be retrofitted later? I'm expecting infrastructure grant dollars to kind of trickle out over time as they allocate them and they put a lot towards electric vehicles. And the feds like to go back and fix something rather than fix it up front.
Yeah, I think my guess is that it could be retrofitted. I would imagine that some of it will have to be taken out and put back in.
Yeah.
It's a considerable amount of infrastructure to do the fast chargers.
Yeah, and if it costs $100,000 to do from the ground up, I don't know how much extra it would cost to rip it up. So I'd say go ahead with the project and wait to see if federal dollars want to come down and fund some electric stations.
I think there's a possibility of that. I'm sorry, just to jump in on that before. You know, the state of Oregon is, I know I can't believe I'm saying this, but the state of Oregon is only getting a billion dollars. And a long time ago, that was a lot of money, but it doesn't seem to go very, very far. So I don't know how rural areas will fare with that amount of money.
That's true.
Just a point to the dollars that I have a feeling are just going to trickle our way.
I don't really have much more to add. I agree with most of what's said. It's disappointing that we weren't able to get the grant. I would like to see this project move forward as well.
So I guess it would be if we can meet the timeframe that Pacific Power could adhere to the 30-60 review time, then we could go ahead and maybe look at the other charging charger. But I think it'd be predicated whether they could or not.
So I'm firm with consensus we won't do the fast charger. And I believe we have consensus to move forward with the slower charger as long as Pacific Power can meet their 30- to 60-day review window. Is that correct?
Is that, Sarah, is that how you feel?
Yes, thanks.
Okay, Drew?
Yep.
And Rob and Stephanie?
I would say as long as it's in that, near that $30,000 range.
Yeah.
And just another question, 60 days is going to put us out, what, January, mid to end of January? If they go that late? And farmer's market starts in May. And then festival season, I have a feeling is probably going to move forward. Is that project doable to get completed?
It'll be completed sometime during the festival year, I mean, during the farmer's market year. It won't be done before May. There's no way. It can be done before May unless we don't put a car charger at all and we finish up. And then Jim, jump in. If we finish up the design and get it out to bid in January, then it possibly could be completed by May.
Yeah, it'd be close.
I think I missed it. What was the infrastructure required for the $30,000 version?
I think that's already available in that area.
Okay, that's what I thought.
All right, so as long as we can meet the $30,000 fee approximately in the timeframe, then we move forward on it. If not, then we'll come back and revisit another time.
Okay, and we won't need to bring this, this will be funded through Urban Renewal. I won't need to bring this back since that falls within the spending authority.
Okay. Anything else, Sergeant?
No, that's it.
Okay, council comments. How about you, Sarah? We'll start with you.
None tonight, thank you.
All right, Carmen?
All right, well, I honestly don't have much, but I'm glad to see that we can move forward with this project. You know, that's just what's on my mind right now. I just got back from a vacation and saw a lot of electric cars on the road. So I think that, you know, I had a long discussion on the way home about the future of electric cars and how our city will play a role in what that will look like. And so I'm glad that we're, you know, trying to find a place for these things to happen. And I appreciate everybody working on that and keeping it in their focus. Other than that, I don't really have much. I've still got travel brain, so I'll pass it on. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Carmen. Drew?
Quiet day for me. I got nothing.
All right, Rob?
It's pretty rare that I'm the one that talks the most. First thing, I want to remind everybody that the Community Coalition of Empires having their tree lighting on December 3rd. Again, this year, the Cus Bay Fire Department is going to give Santa a tour of Empire neighborhoods and give out gifts from three to five. And then after that, they will be doing the tree lighting, which again will be virtual this year. And I believe you can watch it on the Coalition's Facebook page. And I believe the map of the neighborhoods they're going through is on that page as well. Secondly, last meeting, I gave you an update on the library design consultant. We had reviewed three statement of qualifications and narrowed that down to two finalists. Last week, we interviewed the two finalists. Hacker and HGE Architects were the two finalists. They were 90-minute interviews. It included a portion where the consultants could introduce who was going to be on the project. They also did a 25-minute presentation and then we followed that with question and answers. I believe you all got Roger's email that we selected Hacker. For me and I think for most of the committee, they were leading the way after the first round and that was just confirmed through the interviews. Some of the things that stood out were they have a vast experience in designing libraries. And the project manager, that's actually all she does now is design libraries. Also, although both firms talked about it being an emergency shelter and the least amount of disturbance to the park, I believe Hacker had given it more thought. So I think the council can be confident in our decision. I don't know if Jim or Sammy wants to chime in here? No, I thought.
I'm just, oh, sorry, go ahead, Jim.
Okay, I'll continue then. I thought both did very well in the presentation, but I think as Counselor Miles said, Hacker just had a depth of experience that the others didn't have.
Sammy?
I'll just second what both of them have said. Yeah, they were good presentations, lots of interesting things to think about. And, you know, I already have the wheels turning, so it's pretty exciting.
Great. And also, I think Roger included Hacker's SOQ in that email. If you haven't had a chance to look at it, I have it right here. And I want to thank Jim and Jennifer and Sammy and Christina and Kurt Benward for all the work they did on this. And that's all I have.
Great. And Stephanie?
Well, December 3rd, you mentioned the Community Coalition of Empires event. That should get you into the mood because it is Bus Jam the next day. And tomorrow, we kick off a big event. The mayor is going to don some running shoes and go up against the mayor of North Bend to collect some food. So you can come down and if you're going to get up early, come down and cheer him on. But I do want to mention that there's a lot of information at busjam.org. And the registration is also there for folks who feel that they are going to need some assistance. They are doing them only by appointment this year, so get on there. Please take a look at the people that support that as you scroll to the bottom to get to the registration. And currently, there are several events that are taking place, not just the shopping spree tomorrow at McKay's in Cus Bay, but also the Mill Casino is doing a slot tournament. There's a challenge with the farmers. Rick Osborne over in North Bend against Kokial Farmer Agent Tyler Mulkey. And then, of course, the McKay's are selling a $5 bag. It's easy. If you shop there, all you have to do is say, "I want to buy a Bus Jam bag" and they will take care of everything for you. Just making it easy. Southwestern Oregon Community College, their teams put on a fundraiser. That's online. I should have that information. That will be going up on the Bus Jam Facebook page and at busjam.org. Just a lot of stuff happening. I know it's a couple of weeks away, but this gets us all in the mood. And I did have to do a little research for the city manager who asked how many times now I represent the city of Cus Bay here, but on Bus Jam Day, I actually am rooting for North Bend to fill my bus. And so it's interesting because Mike lives in North Bend, but he does Cus Bay and I live in Cus Bay and do the bus at North Bend. I can't remember where I was going with that, but anyway, we have discovered. Oh, the trophy. I forgot the trophy tonight. I was going to actually get it to the city.
Oh, my God, we've been waiting a year.
I know. You're going to have to do it again, Joe. You're going to have to get it again. I promise. But Cus Bay has beat North Bend by four, four years since they've been doing the trophy. I think it's 11 wins for Cus Bay and seven wins for North Bend. And so if you want to see the trophy, Cus Bay, you got to really work on it to get it. Boy, I have Jessica over in North Bend and she is working it hard, I tell you.
Mr. Mayor, just so you know, I put together a piece for the Friday update and I have only listed drop-off places in Cus Bay.
Yes, well, we appreciate everyone's support. This is the 20th year that Bus Jam has been happening. And we started with one bus and I actually said five buses last time, but we actually fill six buses in four communities. And huge impact for South Coast Food Share, who's been an absolutely wonderful partner in this along the way, dealing with our craziness, as well as the Rotary Club, which joined us about four or five years ago to do the distribution. And that is where you see the impact this has. And 20 years means that it's come around. People who were recipients are now volunteering and helping out and hopefully sharing what this has meant for them because it's been a wonderful event. I know I'm biased, but it's been a lot of fun and joy over the last 20 years. So I hope you'll come out and enjoy this year as well.
What is the deadline to register for families?
I believe I talked them into extending it out through Tuesday, which is, let's see, the 4th, 5th, 6th. So I believe, to be safe, I would say by Monday, the 6th of December. Get yourself registered. It's super easy. They'll walk you through, make sure you read the directions on there and just fill everything out. You pick your appointment time, so, and people loved it last year. The pandemic actually worked in a positive way of being creative to get people in and out safely and quickly. And so we served about, we served about 1,000 children last year.
And did you mention where the distribution happens?
We don't. You can't just show up, but the Boys and Girls Club has been a huge supporter as well and they made that easy. But if you show up, they probably won't let you in the parking lot. Make sure you get registered because otherwise it's just, it's too crazy in that parking lot. And again, we do appreciate the Boys and Girls Club for all their support. And again, we do appreciate the Boys and Girls Club for all their support.
Anything else?
I think I forgot what the point, you thought you talked a lot.
No, it's fine. Anyway, as Stephanie mentioned, there's a shopping spree tomorrow that's going to kick off the Bus Jam. Mayor Engelke and myself, I'm glad it's a 90-second sprint because if it was a long distance, I'd be in deep trouble. Jessica runs five miles all the time, so I don't think I could keep up. So that's a plus, I hope. And anyway, I also want to thank Northwest Natural Gas, who will be participating, along with McKay's and also K-Dog. And then the Christmas tree went up today. I was walking, and I watched re-electric kelp with city staff, and they untied it and put it up. And so I guess it's all ready to be decorated. I've watched the other decorations being put up throughout the city. I'm sure everyone's been watching, and they've got most of them up, I believe, which is great. And then, Rob, I want to thank you for participating in selecting an architect for the library. I know you put a lot of time and effort into it, so it's much appreciated. You thanked everyone else but yourself, but I would thank you for us. So anyway, that being said, that's the end of my comments for this evening. So we have an executive session this evening, but I was going to postpone the meeting. We'll go into Urban Renewal, take care of business, and then come back in the executive session. But we will not be coming out of executive session and making any decisions. So I just want to let you know. So at this time, I'll postpone the meeting and turn over the Urban Renewal meeting to Stephanie.
All right, and we'll go ahead and call the Urban Renewal meeting to order. And our first item is public comments. No public comments, so we'll move on to the consent calendar.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is, oh, a public hearing on the consideration of supplemental budget for 2021-2022 fiscal year. Approval would require the adoption of Resolution 21-08. Is that you, Nicole?
That is me. Thank you. This supplemental budget is a process we usually walk through about this time of the year after we work through the audit and no final audit figures. That allows us to review our carryover, our anticipated carryover balances for each fund and adjust accordingly for those differences in the carryover balances. That's mostly what you're seeing just in the Urban Renewal. There is no additional, like we had in the city, supplemental budget.
I was looking for that. So, okay, that makes sense. All right, is there, are there any questions for Nicole before I open the public hearing? Anything from Sarah or Carmen? All right, then I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any comments? And sensing nothing, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. And how does the agency wish to proceed?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 21-08 approving the supplemental budget for fiscal year 2021-2022.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. Okay, I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 21-08 approving the supplemental budget for fiscal year 21 and 20, 21 to 22. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
So the Urban Renewal is adjourned, and we're back into the Coos Bay City Council meeting. And we'll be going into executive session, and Melissa will read the execution session, right? Please. Thank you, everyone.